Call the regular city commission meeting of Tuesday, September 11th, 2012 to order. Before the pledge of allegiance, may we stand for a moment of silence in honor of those who lost their lives 11 years ago and in the wars since. May we say the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amy, may we take roll?
Commissioner Bushy?
Here.
Commissioner Crizziak?
Here.
Commissioner Perry?
Here.
Commissioner Rubino?
Here.
Mayor Costelli?
Here.
Next item is consideration of the following minutes. Regular city commission meeting held Tuesday, July 10th, 2012. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move the minute--
Excuse me, I'm sorry, Mayor. I was wondering if we could amend the minutes?
After there's a motion, then we can discuss--
Sorry.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the minutes of the regular city commission held Tuesday, July 10th, 2012 be approved as recommended.
Is there support?
Support.
Mr. Crizziak?
I apologize to Commissioner Bushy.
No, no.
Thank you, Mayor. In looking over the July 10th commission meeting, I would like to reference, under public comments or public discussion-- (music) And we talked about the memorial fund that's being established for Sergeant Leach's son. I was hoping that we could enter into the minutes, the specifics of that fund, for people who were referencing that would be able to contribute.
Amy, did we discuss the specifics? I think we did at the meeting.
I would have to refer to the tape from that meeting.
If the tape supports that, I have no problem with it. If the tape doesn't support that, it can always be separately presented somehow.
Okay.
Shall we pass on the minutes until the next meeting, and then Amy can review that?
I would appreciate that. Amy, can I make a motion then that we postpone the acceptance of the--
Is there a motion to table?
Motion to table.
I second.
Is there anything else in the minutes that Amy should be looking for?
I would also, Mayor, under city commission liaison reports, under my update for the rec commission, I'd like it noted that we welcomed Recreation Assistant Bridget Brown and that I wanted to thank-- that we wanted to thank Erica Pratt for her service to the community. I'd ask that we include that in under city commission liaison reports.
Again, Amy, will you verify whether the tape supports that, and if so, we can consider that next month.
Yeah.
In the future, it would be helpful if you spot things in the minutes over the weekend to call on Monday, and then items can be looked at and corrected and be here before us to act upon.
I appreciate that, Mayor.
Mayor, vote on the motion to table.
Commissioner Crizziak?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Bushy?
Yes.
Commissioner Rubino?
Yes.
Mayor Costelli?
Yes, motion carries. Next item is the monthly dispersment report. Amy.
Payroll and accounts payable for the months of July and August were provided to all of you prior to the meeting. For July, payroll was $79,681.43, and accounts payable was $1,444,469.92, of which $1,192,691.81 was payable in tax liabilities. And then for the month of August, payroll was $75,027.18. Accounts payable was $2,917,562.50, of which $2,333,867.97-- or, I'm sorry, $862.97 was in tax liabilities.
Again, those are tax liabilities collected for other jurisdictions. Is that correct?
Yes.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the July and August dispersment reports be approved as listed.
Is there support?
I second that.
Questions, comments?
Yes, Mayor.
Which report, Jason?
For the July 2012 accounts payable, specifically, one, two, three, four, page four, thanks, Amy, it's for check number 16612 for the golf cart. I was-- I would hope that the-- or I would ask--
Let me see there.
Page four.
Or three.
Or four.
It's on page four.
Here you go.
16612.
Okay, got it.
I would ask if the city manager could explain that expense.
Michigan Tournament Fleet is the company the city uses to rent golf carts for special events. We rented a golf cart during the Maywood construction project for one of the homeowners who was unable to literally walk from his doorstep any distance other than off of his front porch. That's something that we have done in the past to accommodate residents who need-- who have special needs. And then, in this particular case, it worked out quite well. Once the project in his portion of the street was completed, we kept the golf cart for an additional weekend because it was the dream cruise weekend, and the police were able to use it. So it was-- the timing was good this year.
Yes, I think it's a great use for residents who may be subject to inconvenience. I guess the only question I would have is, would that be something that the contractor, maybe in a future contract, would be able to pick up as a courtesy, as opposed to the city paying for that?
I can certainly ask them.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions or comments on the dispersment reports? May we take a vote?
Commissioner Bushy?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Crizziak?
Yes.
Commissioner Rubino?
Yes.
Mayor Costelli?
Yes, motion carries. Next item, governmental reports. Commissioner Zach Holmes. For a few moments.
Thank you. I have a new technology where I'm taking notes on my phone. First thing that I want to talk about is this apprenticeship book. Oakland County publishes this every year, and they circulate about 8,000 copies. Workforce development departments have it, and it lists all sorts of training programs throughout the community. And we just accepted a grant, and all of this is going to be online starting in January. And what it's helping people do is identify training programs that can also connect to employers and, you know, employers that need particular expertise will be participating in these apprenticeship programs as well. So I think it's a good resource tool. And we'll keep you posted when it's online. We did accept more-- we have another collaboration in the south end of the county with Oakland County Parks, and I really want to give credit to our county commissioner, Gary McIlroy, who I will introduce in just a moment. He's the person that sits on the Parks and Recreation Committee from the south end, representing some of our issues. And what they were able to do is, there is the George Suarez Nature Center in Madison Heights, and now they are going to be running a collaboration with the county, where the county is going to keep this nature center open, build it up, have more education and so forth, so we get to sustain this unique set of nature trails in Madison Heights nearby. We also have official webcasting now. Since I've been a county commissioner for 10 years, we've wanted to let people know what we're doing, or at least some of us did. And part of the initiative, when I first started there, we only met in the daytime. We were able to develop half of our meetings. Our whole meetings are at night, and now we are webcasting everything, including our committee meetings, where really, most of our work is done. So if you'd like to watch us in action and see what really happens in the county, you can access this through the county website, www.okegov.com. Go under Board of Commissioners, and you will be led into how to access the webcasting. And the committee meetings are new, so I'm excited about it. You can see budget hearings in action. I worked on a study group to examine our prescription drug plan, and we did, and we went through a whole RFP, you know, process months. We are going to be offering a new prescription drug program probably the beginning of the year. This is a free program that residents can use to get discounted drugs. We also will see some additional services, maybe some x-ray or some dental services, some other spinoff services that are discounted through this program, and more information will be coming. One of the things about this new provider that I really liked is that they're going to invest a lot of time and money in marketing the program throughout the county, so people will know that it exists, and hopefully, we will get better penetration utilization. I want to remind people that we still have a lot of funding for microloans startup. You can seek this out through the Oakland County Economic Development Department. There's a whole multitude of training programs and pre-screening you for eligibility about microloan funding. And it's my pleasure and opportunity to introduce my colleague, Gary McIlroy, who hopefully is going to be voted in to start serve in November, to serve as your next county commissioner. And I can tell you that Gary brings a tremendous amount of dedication, expertise, customer service, and then some, to the job as county commissioner. So I know that you're-- I'm very sad to be losing Pleasant Ridge at the end of the year, but I know that you're going to be in good hands. And I'd like to invite Gary to introduce himself, if you don't mind.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of council. I appreciate it. Just a little bit more on the nature center. Just a stone's throw from my house, so I was on the committee that planned it originally. The city of Madison Heights operated it for many years, and then, like so many other cities, funding kind of fell out. Revenues went down, so they couldn't afford to run it anymore, so volunteers have operated for the last two years, and I approached the county board, as well as the city, to try to get them to take over operation, in that the wave pool is right across the street, the golf course is attached to it, right next door to it, and then we have the soccer complex, plus the dog park, which is the Red Oaks complex. So I'm happy to say, this starting October 1st, it'll be called the Red Oaks Nature Center, so it'll be a welcomed addition to the south end of the county. And I look forward to serving you. If any of you have any questions at any point in time, I've given most of you my card, it's got my cell number on it, as well as my home number, call me anytime, so.
I understand your working with Sherry goes back some twenty-some years.
Yeah, I served on the Madison Heights City Council for 24 years, served three years as mayor over there as well, so I've got lots of municipal experience and understanding what goes into running cities and things like that, so.
Good luck to you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Other governmental reports. Heather, that would include you. Did somebody beat you up?
(laughing) (inaudible) It's been a little while since I've been here. Wanted to just take a quick opportunity, reintroduce myself to the community. I think there's still some familiar faces up here. I'm Heather Carmona, Director of the Woodward Avenue Action Association, and I wanted to just take a quick opportunity to thank you for your renewed interest in the WA3 and involvement. We really appreciate it and are delighted to have Pleasant Ridge back at the table and involved. I know there's been a lot of debate as to why Pleasant Ridge left and what we can do differently and how we're moving forward, but I think right now, in the air, is a lot of change and opportunity, and things change, and you grow and you learn from experiences, and that's what we're looking to do. I think you'll see a lot of change at the WA3, and Ann Perry, who's joined the board as your representative, has been at our last, I think, two, three meetings, I'm trying to think of, because they're bimonthly, and we are very much a different organization than we were even a year ago. So again, I want to thank you for your investment, the time. I also want to recognize Mark Johnson, who is technically the business representative from the community. He's always kind of hung on and continues, I think, to advocate well on behalf of Woodward Avenue, pushes me in a lot of different directions, too, he's a good voice. So I just wanted to make those remarks. I did want to pass out and make sure that you're all in communication and back on our list, so I don't think I ever took you off, and there's been some changes, that you're receiving information, if you want to receive it, you're getting our newsletter, which is now a biannual newsletter, we've-- or, excuse me, semiannual, twice a year. We were doing it quarterly, but we've cut back, so you only see that twice a year. But we do a lot through email, obviously, our email newsletter, and one-on-one communication, too, so I just want to thank you. I brought a copy of our work plan this year. This isn't our full work plan, it's a summary version that explains a little bit of our priorities and our projects, so wherever there's more interest in plugging in, or where you think there's areas where Pleasant Ridge needs to be more, or we need to be more attentive, you know, I'd like your feedback. So I will distribute that, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to talk myself out. (inaudible) Do you have any question to be happy to answer, then? If not, I can--
Thank you.
Let you get on to your busy meeting.
We have been working on alternatives analysis together for the transit. Do you have any-- what's-- do you have any update on where we are with that right now?
Yes, Commissioner Perry is referring to the Federal Transportation Administration Alternative Analysis, which is the federal process that communities need to go through in order to qualify for federal funding to preempt a major transportation or transit project. The WA3 was involved in the application for that. I'm giving a little background for people who may not be aware. It was a $2 million grant that was intended to really look at studying opportunities for mass transit along Woodward Avenue between Eight Mile and Pontiac. The grant was received two months prior to the announcement by the mayor of Detroit and the governor that they were going to repurpose what we like to call the Woodward Light Rail Project into the Bus Rapid Transit Project, so that project took a different direction. So our $2 million grant now includes the entire length of Woodward Avenue. So a contract was let, pretty extensive process. We are not managing the grant. The Southeast Michigan Council of Governments is managing it because it's through the Federal Transit Administration, but we are an advisor on it, identifying key nodes, stops, doing a lot of the community outreach and stakeholder involvement. But we will be working with a consultant, which is Parsons Brinkerhoff. They worked on the-- a lot of their work in Detroit, and they have extensive involvement in the M-1 rail project, too, which is now being called Woodward Street Car. So just trying to keep track of everything is a full-time job. So that's-- to answer your question directly, Ann, the contract was let a couple weeks ago. I'm trying to think, I'm losing track, I can't believe we're in the middle of September. In August, I believe in October, they're looking to start the public outreach, and there is a core steering committee that's been meeting, which you are the member of, and the intention, I believe, is by the end of the year, to begin identifying, or at least having the initial data analysis collected. There's a lot of data that needs to be collected and input from the community, so they're going to be beginning that process.
Thank you.
Long-winded answer, but I think I got there at the end.
Other questions? Welcome back.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, sir.
All right. (inaudible). Pass it on, Sherry.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity, Mayor and Commissioner, for allowing me to introduce myself. My name is Kevin Hawley. I'm the Democratic nominee this year for Oakland County Executive, so I wanted to come by, make a courtesy introduction, and tell you briefly a little bit about myself from a personal perspective, not a political perspective. I'm actually a native of Oakland County, grew up in Farmington Township, now Farmington Hills, and currently live with my family in Huntington Woods. We have two kids, one's at Burton, one's at Norup. They're in the Berkeley schools. And I really-- I'm a businessman by background, so this is my first run for political office, but I appreciate all you guys do. I have served on a planning commission before, on a zoning committee, and a community development corporation, so I know it's a big endeavor to represent community efforts, so I do appreciate what you guys do. I've had kind of three parts of my career. I've been an entrepreneur, I've worked for large corporate environments, and the last eight years, I've been a turnaround manager. In fact, the last project I did, I was the person responsible for helping to turn around affirmations just in Ferndale, just below here, so after that project, this just kind of came forward. So I'll avoid political comment, but just in terms of my motivations for getting in the race, I was very frustrated to see the redistricting and the impact that it had on the southern part of the county. I think you guys suffered from the change in commissioners. I felt like that was not an appropriate approach to government, and then, just from a big-picture perspective, I feel like the southern part of the county, especially below Maple, has really suffered the most from 2000 to 2010, with all the job losses and the vacant buildings, and I just feel like we need to be more strategic, and the voice in the southern end of the county needs to be heard a little bit more, a little bit more, because we are kind of on the edge in many parts of the southern part. You guys have done a good job here managing your resources, but it's been a struggle for other communities, so I appreciate the chance to just come by and say hello. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other governmental reports?
Yep.
Hi, I'm Amy Butters, and I'm here to introduce myself to the mayor and the commission and the residents of Pleasant Ridge as a candidate for the Ferndale School Board race this November. I am a Pleasant Ridge resident. I live on Millington. I spoke with you back in February, I think, about our Ferndale bond election, and trying to spread the word about that, and I want to, you know, thank everyone for their support on that effort. It did pass, and we're really excited about that success. I'm here with three other candidates. I am the B in bold, and I have the three other-- the three other candidates with me tonight. I really appreciate the chance to just come and introduce, meet myself and my other candidates to you, and let everyone know that we will be out talking to voters in the next two months. We hope to meet as many voters as possible and talk about our great school district that we have here, and we're looking forward to the campaign and going door-to-door and talking to more of you also in the next couple of months. And really appreciate your willingness to listen to us tonight, and I'll let the next three go here.
And are they going in the order of bold?
We are. (inaudible) The next is O.
Did anybody have to go to probate court to change their last name? Not this time.
Hello, Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Jim O'Donnell. I'm a resident of Ferndale and running for school board, as Amy said. Just, I don't want to get into anything political here, but one of the key motivators I have is to work more closely with the municipalities that are part of the Ferndale School District. So in addition to letting voters in Pleasant Ridge know that I'll be walking around looking forward to meeting them, I also wanted you to know that that's going to be an important part of what I would do if I'm elected. So we'll be seeing more of each other, hopefully, after November, certainly, not just before then. So thank you very much, and--
Thank you.
Have a good meeting.
And to Elle.
Hello. My name is Raylan Leaksmay. Hello, officials and community members. I've been a member of the community for about 20 years. I'm a mother of five, and what I really want to do is I want to work with all of the communities that incorporate the Ferndale School District. I want to work with all of you, Royal Oak Township, Pleasant Ridge, Oak Park, Ferndale, and I just want to build community, and I want to build bridges. If there-- all of our children are involved, and I'm really looking forward to working with all of you, and I'm very excited to be a candidate, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor?
I did go to probate court to change my name when my wife and I had related. My original name was Kraus, it's now Deegan Kraus, but I didn't do it for this purpose, to make it bold instead of bulk, so that wouldn't work. I want to simply say, and I know everyone here has other things that they want to talk about, so never stand in between citizens and the things that really concern them, but I will say this, and I'll use the words of actually my bold colleague, Jim O'Donnell. I send my kids to this district because it's good. I'm running for school board because I want to make it better, and I think we can do that right now. According to the school district's own statistics, only about a third of the people of this community feel comfortable sending their kids to their own school district. We can do a lot better than that, and one of my goals is to make us a first choice, not a last choice, not a little choice, but a first-choice school district. So thanks for your attention, and have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck. Any other governmental reports? Next is city commission liaison reports. Rec commission, Commissioner Crizziak.
Thank you, Mayor. On the recreation front, soccer season started up recently with Pleasant Ridge having two teams in the U6 league, and actually, the two teams met this weekend, and it was an under-six bloodbath with the Little Tykes. No, it was a lot of fun. There were a lot of PR residents out there cheering on our little kids, and we look forward to a great season. I wanted to thank the two coaches of the U6 teams, Dawn and Lou Eklund, and Eric Scheibl. They've taken on the duty of harnessing that kid energy into goals, and I applaud them for that. Also, I'd like to tell everybody that the-- this is an issue that was discussed throughout the year, the basketball rims at Gainsborough Park have been-- one rim has been installed, and it looks good, and it's hungry for some baskets, so I encourage residents to get out there and shoot some hoops. On our recreation meeting held on August 29th, Bridgette Brown, our new recreation assistant, was there, and she sat in and introduced herself to the commission. We had a full agenda that evening. Some of you may have seen on the recreation Facebook page, an appearance, a blast from the past, one item featuring our esteemed mayor from the '90s--
With a much darker beard.
Our recreation director, Scott Petrazak, had uncovered a lost vault of tapes from the '90s, a program called Inside Pleasant Ridge that aired on community access in the '90s, and it was hosted by a Pleasant Ridge resident, Dave Smith.
Longtime city commissioner as well.
And I got a chance to view some of the items that Scott had posted, and it looked like a lot of fun. I don't-- do you remember those days? Absolutely. What do you mean? So, but Scott really had a passion to reinvent the concept and kind of bring that back. I'm sure you're aware, the technology has increased significantly in the last few years, and Scott's really excited about getting a project like that off the ground. One thing we talked about was utilizing the assets in the community as far as talent. People have a broad-- we have a lot of very talented, smart people in this community, and so we want, as a recreation commission, we want to encourage anyone who may be interested in participating in a project like that, a video project, to contact Scott, and hopefully we can get something off the ground and on your cable screen or computer screens soon. The next item we talked about at our recreation meeting was the Pleasant Ridge Thanksgiving Artist Market. It's scheduled for November 16th and-- It's scheduled for November 16th and 17th. Right now, Sue Turpak is heading that committee, and she's asking for submissions. Right now, we have, I think, 18 artists. We'd love to have more, particularly if anyone knows any jewelers who may be interested in displaying and selling their wares. We'd like to fill that niche there. So our other thing we talked about was the community garden. It's, I think it's been, the growth has been spectacular down there. I don't know if spectacular, there's many adjectives I guess we could use down there. There's a lot of growth down there. On October 6th, at 10:00 a.m., we'll be having the harvest party to kind of wrap things up for the winter, winterize the garden. So keep that in mind, October 6th at 10:00 a.m., we'll have the harvest party at the community garden. One thing our recreation committee talked about was maybe in the spring, having master gardeners, maybe a class schedule or some sort of workshop where we could talk about gardening techniques. Another subcommittee, our Health and Wellness, Jaclyn Scully heads that. She's developing a youth reading program for next year. And we want to get the book exchange back at the rec. center. I don't know if we've gotten those titles back at the rec. center. One thing I learned is that the kids in the summer camp kind of take over that area of the community center. So now that the kids have kind of been ushered off to school, the books are kind of reclaiming their spot there. So we encourage people to use that resource, drop off, pick up any titles that they may be interested in. The last item I want to get to, it's a subcommittee that was added this year to look at improving playground opportunities for the children in this community. Diana Perino, Jaclyn Sculler, and Victor Fornari have volunteered to dedicate their time to investigating ways we can improve the parks and the opportunities for children in this community, play opportunities. We met recently with Scott and Sherry and John Ico Angeli to look at the practicality of a project that we're getting excited about, and we look forward to rolling that out in the future. So, thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, Commissioner Bushy.
Okay, as far as the planning commission goes, in August, the city manager asked the members to review a zoning ordinance regarding outdoor works of art, considered whether or not amendment would be appropriate to the code, city code. This has to do with carving of a tree into a sculpture on a residential property that was located on a property line, and the neighbor did not want the sculpture to be there. So we had a request from a resident that's concerned about that and see if there's a need for it. The planning commission did decide that no change needed to be made with the current ordinance with respect to landscape art. The DDA, we have the concert in the park coming September 19th at 6:30. Also, they talked about alley improvement committee presented a short and long-term list of goals to improve the alleys in the city. The subcommittee will be meeting with the city administration to develop a timeline. The city's economic development coordinator offered an update on the liquor license application for the new restaurant at 24242 Woodard Avenue, also known as Fields, informing them that a public hearing will be held Monday, September 24th. There were some discussion and questions by residents, but the chairman advised them to attend the public hearing and to address those questions there. That's my update.
Thank you. Historical Commission, Commissioner Rubino.
The historical commission doesn't meet in August, even though we held a special meeting, because this coming weekend, we're having the antique show and sale that's going to be at the rec. center. It's start on Friday night if you want to come to an early portion of the sale. Then it's going to be on Saturday from 9:00 to 4:00, and then I think it's 10:00 to 4:00 on Sunday. So everybody's welcome to come and be participated in it and support the historical commission. We're looking forward to putting this on. We're going to set up on Friday, and hopefully we have a good turnout for that. The other thing that historical commission is planning is when we do the tree lighting this year, we're going to have a meet and greet with Santa, and you can bring your children. They have pictures taken, and you can tell Santa all the things he wants or she wants, and they can also bring their letters if they like to. So, and that'll be announced as the time gets near. The historical commission is a lot of fun, and I really enjoy being part of it. That's it for now. Thanks.
And everything else, Commissioner Perry.
Well, with the transit, Heather Carmona gave a good update on sort of where we are with the WA3 and what I'm, or with the alternatives analysis as it's getting going. And one of the things that they have asked is for each of the cities to present any of their planning ideas and things that could impact that study so that we can make sure we have information included. And so I'm excited that this week, city manager Ball and I are going to sit down with John Ico Angeli, and Mark Johnson's going to attend. And so we can talk about sort of what the bigger plans are for Pleasant Ridge and make sure they take them into consideration. With the schools, School Improvement Mondays is one of the really big things for everyone to take note of. On Mondays, on many Mondays, schools will be getting out one hour earlier in the Ferndale School District. And so kids will be getting off the bus earlier and coming home earlier. But also, the teachers then will be doing an extra hour. They'll be doing after-school work with other teachers, trying to improve and share success stories and, you know, successful methods to try and improve their teaching and methodology that's going on. So make sure you note the kids will be home an hour early. And then, as we met four of the school board candidates, there is a very important election on November 6th. And this election is, it's key in setting the direction for our school district. And as we all know, this greatly affects our community. So make sure you find out everything you can about your school board candidates. Thank you. That's all.
Perry, do you have anything to report on the district court situation?
I have no news.
Next item is the consent agenda. Sherry.
Well, Mayor, there are three items on the consent agenda this evening. Really, we consider them to be routine. One is a proclamation declaring September as National Preparedness Month. Another proclamation declaring September 17th as Citizenship Day, and September 16th through the 22nd as Constitution Week. And then finally, the annual request by the First United Methodist Church of Ferndale to hold a portion of its annual crop walk in the city of Pleasant Ridge.
Is there a motion?
Commissioner, may I move the consent agreement agenda be approved as recommended?
There's support. Support. Let me take a vote.
Commissioner Bushy?
Yes.
Commissioner Rubino?
Yes.
Commissioner Crizziak?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Mayor Costello?
Yes, motion carries. Next item is consideration of the agreement between the city of Pleasant Ridge and the city of Berkeley regarding dispatch services. Sherry.
Mayor and city commissioners, this is an item that I have been working on probably for the last year. And basically, what it is, you may recall that the city entered into an agreement as a stop-gap message, as a stop-gap program in the event the city was unable to reach agreement with the city of Ferndale for fire protection services. Part of that agreement with the city of Berkeley was if it did not go forward, there was a provision in there that Pleasant Ridge would pay the sum of $52,000. After the city reached an agreement with the city of Ferndale for fire protection, obviously, I knew that this was something that we would need to address. And having a strong relationship with Berkeley, I immediately started talking to the city manager about what we could do to maintain the high quality of service that we currently receive, but that the city, simply by not fulfilling or not having a need for the contract, obviously, did not want to pay the sum of money. And so after several meetings and discussions, I have before you an agreement that I was able to reach with Berkeley. It has been reviewed by our city attorneys, both Mr. Cooper and Mr. Lang, that basically lays out the same provisions in the agreement for a term of five years. And by doing so, the fee of $52,000 is eliminated.
And then the fee for the five years is fixed where we are now?
It is frozen where we are now, so there will be no increases over the next five years.
And it's also terminable by either city?
With 30-day notice.
No, that's with breach.
Or breach. You're right.
That's terminal for breach. I think it's one-year's notice.
That's right.
Without cause. And this has already been approved by Berkeley?
It has.
Can we ask questions, or do we wait for the motion?
Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the agreement between the city of Pleasant Ridge and the city of Berkeley regarding dispatch services for a period of five years, effective July 1, 2012 through June 30, 2017, be approved, and that the mayor, city clerk, city manager, and city attorney be authorized to sign the agreement.
Is there support? Support. Commissioner Perry.
Actually, you know, and this has been sort of a controversial kind of a thing since sort of the beginning on whether or not we owed the $52,000 cancellation fee and just because we have been, you know, we've had a relationship with Berkeley for so long. I mean, I'm, you know, and I guess it's mitigated to nothing, but what do we know that? I guess I'm concerned that we're giving a $200,000 contract away without sort of a competitive bid. And if there is a better way, that we could have played that out without?
We could actually have paid the $52,000 and then gone out to bid or proposals for dispatch services. I felt, in taking the direction of where we were heading, I mean, I think everyone knew that once we reached an agreement for fire protection services, that this contract, which was entered into in good faith by both parties, was just no longer needed.
Would we have had to pay the $52,000 seeing that the other contract had not taken place yet, had not been activated yet, since it was a July 2013 contract?
Yes, we would have been obligated to pay the amount to Berkeley.
Okay, and I guess I'm sort of, I was concerned to see that we, as a city, had already, before I honestly knew anything about it, that had already drawn, you know, had drawn up the contract and a lawyer, or I'm sorry, and Berkeley had already voted on this agreement before I had any knowledge at all that this was going on. And I don't know if any of the other commissioners, but I mean, I was very surprised that it seems like, you know, the residents didn't have any knowledge. And, you know, it's sort of, it reminded me, it went back to last year where I was very surprised that we didn't have sort of all the input or just some process in thinking about, okay, is this the best solution?
I think under the duties of my administration, I felt it was an obligation, and certainly there would be no contrary opinion that the city commission, the citizens, would not want to pay $52,000. And that if there was a way to achieve that, then, you know, that would be the best road to follow. Obviously, you know, I always consult with the city attorneys on contract matters or on many issues. So it's not unusual for me to discuss things with the city attorneys. Yes, Berkeley put this on their agenda because their meeting was before ours, but it is before you this evening for approval. So, you know, I put it in the memo in August so that you would have some background. I think it was a pretty lengthy, you know, comment section of what happened and what occurred. And then this evening, and that's just the process, and then you put it on the agenda for a vote.
Well, and my concern was that Berkeley had already voted, so it's already so far down the road that it's one of those things where, you know, and obviously, we can vote no. But it's a, it sounds like something that it should, I would have thought would have been discussed with the city commission before we had done that, before the vote, is I guess what I'm saying. And then I had watched the August video after I had gotten that, after I'd gotten your memo. And so you guys were stating, though, today that there is a one-year out because in this contract, it doesn't say that, that there is a one-year. Our contract just says it's for breach. Because I know the city manager from Berkeley had made it very clear that there was like a one-year, no, for no reason whatsoever, cancellation fee. And this one does not have that. And it just seems like we wouldn't want to enter into a contract that doesn't have that kind of a clause for us.
Sure, is this the wrong draft?
You know what? That's what I'm wondering. Look at the adjustment of pieces to date, search of breach. I think it's actually missing a paragraph.
Okay.
It is. Because if you look at either that or maybe the pages are wrong.
I couldn't find it anywhere in this.
Except as otherwise provided, the agreement may be terminated during the term thereof only for breach. At least 30 days shall be provided to Berkeley to cure any alleged breach, and the same is true for Pleasant Ridge.
This must be the earlier draft.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Do we have the?
Do you have the other draft handy, Sherry?
I can go look, but it's going to take me a while to find it. There were 10 different drafts, as you know. Or, you know, you can always reflect in the motion that it includes that language, too.
Well, should we postpone the vote till next month, or?
Why don't we recess for a few minutes and see if Sherry can find it?
Okay.
Is there a moment to recess?
So move.
Moment to recess? All in favor?
Aye.
Except as otherwise provided, the term of this agreement may be terminated by either city for no reason whatsoever, as long as the other city gives one-year written notice to the other. I apologize that the wrong draft of the agreement, like I said, there were probably 10 different drafts.
Thank you.
So in one sense, it's a bugger contract, and in another sense, it's a one-year contract. And it's a frozen price, as long as it stays in place. And we've been with Berkeley for how long? Since 2005, was it, Sherry?
We've been with them eight years.
Any other questions?
Yes, Mayor. I'd like to echo some Commissioner Perry's concerns. As someone who's concerned about the future of our public safety and the direction that we're taking, entering into an agreement with the city of Berkeley for dispatch, continuing the relationship five years out concerns me, especially in light of a $52,000 payment that we would do them. And I guess my concern is, is if we have reached this agreement with Berkeley for them to basically, you know, absolve us of a $52,000 requirement, are there commitments to them for moving ahead with a public safety merger? Was that something that was?
You have the contract before you, Commissioner Crizziak. There are no other terms to the agreement.
So there's no promise or, there's nothing agreed between you and city manager, I as the Souza, that, you know?
I think you've been on the commission long enough to realize that every detail of the work that I do during the week is reported in the weekly memos. There is no hidden agenda. There are no secret conversations, and there are no promises. All I'm representing to you tonight is a contract that I was able to reach with the city of Berkeley so that the city would not have to pay $52,000, and that was the only purpose of trying to reach this agreement.
Okay. No, I appreciate that, and, you know, the, you know, I guess the waiving of that amount for Berkeley, you know, their motivation. the, you know, I guess the waiving of that amount for Berkeley, you know, their motivation, you know, they, by admission, didn't really do anything, right, for $52,000.
It was an agreement that Pleasant Ridge and Berkeley reached. So Berkeley was generous enough to even open the discussions of the possibility of eliminating.
Okay. And, I mean, I understand that this was an attempt to absolve this commitment that we had made to Berkeley, but did we miss a chance to really investigate other options for our dispatch services?
I can't tell you that. I know that originally we went out for bids for dispatch, and, you know, Berkeley at the time was the low bidder, some communities weren't interested at the time. I do know also that now there are discussions with other communities that are looking to join the tri group that's already in existence. I know it's been successful, and I know that our initial investment to make the change has provided a significant savings to the city by the elimination of in-house dispatchers, and, you know, the quality of service is high. So I don't know what would happen if we had done otherwise, if we had decided to go out to bid for dispatch services and pay the $52,000, and another city was the low bidder, we'd still have additional costs now to change over to another city. So, I mean, I just don't know.
Okay. Well, you know, the five years is a long commitment. I'm glad to hear that there is a one year out for this contract. But I would hope, you know, I know this was an extenuating circumstance as far as the $52,000 hanging over this discussion, but I would appreciate, you know, in the future, you know, when we do have contracts that are coming up, that maybe we can, you know, communicate options better. And I guess that's kind of my initial reaction to this, is that I understand that we were kind of forced in this direction because of a, you know, a contract. But I would hope in the future that when contracts come up and they're due to expire, you know, that we can kind of, you know, investigate some other options.
Sherri, this contract's been extended before, I do not...
Over a year.
And you have routinely brought to us with... An extension in hand?
I generally bring it to you as an agenda item to approve, and other contracts as well.
And this is, in essence, perhaps a five-year, but perhaps a one-year like before?
Yes.
Except from the prior years that have been price increases?
Yes.
This time there isn't?
That's correct.
Okay. Other questions?
No, I just, I... I want to thank Sherri for going out of her way to get this contract signed, actually, or getting it prepared for us to review. Eliminated the $52,000, we have a freeze on our price. I see it a win-win situation. We need to get out of it in one year, we get out of it in one year. I do not see any alternative motives here. We've had a firm agreement with Ferndale for four years. There is no under the table handshake here that I'm aware of, and I'm just as informed as you are, or as Ann, or as any other city commissioner on this table. So I thought Sherri did a great job. We eliminated the $52,000. We have a price freeze on this contract for every other contract. We've had price increases for every year. I think it's a win-win situation.
And it would take you most of a year to make a move anyway.
And plus, it was upstart costs to switching, even if you switch.
That's why it would take most of a year. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I want to make a comment. By doing what we did, and you saving the $52,000, and if we had to pay the $52,000, then I'm sure there would have been a lot of complaining of us having to do that. But Sherri, instead of questioning the motives, I think, and should be congratulated by being able to go into a contract for a five-year program with a one-year out, had no cost increase, and the elimination of the $52,000 is a good job.
I think it's a great job.
Yep, I do.
Other comments? Maybe we'll take a vote.
Commissioner Ravino?
Yes.
Commissioner Bushy?
Yes.
Commissioner Krzyak?
No.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Mayor Costelli?
Yes, motion carries. Next item is number 10, consideration of the request by Ms. Nancy Crutchfield of Crutchfield, Inc., Cork Wine Pub, to alter its plan of operation by the extension of Sunday hours in order to offer Sunday brunch. Sherri, and then Nancy.
Yes. You see, the owner of Cork is here this evening, and basically you have before you a letter of request to add a Sunday brunch to the restaurant at Cork. And as you know, when Ms. Crutchfield applied for the liquor license, she indicated on her plan of operation that she would like to at some times have special events on Sundays and Mondays. But now, as I understand it, this will be a regular addition of hours. And so with that, I will just add before, I know there's gonna be a question, this has been reviewed by the city attorney, it does not require a public hearing.
Okay, I've learned about that.
It is something that the city commission can add then.
Okay, thank you very much. Yep, as Sherri said, I'm here to, I'm asking for a variation to my originally approved operating plan by the city. And at the time that I applied for my liquor license, I did ask for Sunday sales, and that was reviewed by the city. Not saying that, yes, I could be open for Sunday, but that, go ahead, get the liquor license for Sunday sales, and we'll review, you know, cross that bridge when we get to it. So here we are. I've been open nearly two years, and now asking if I can open for brunch. So thereby extending my hours on Sunday from 11:00 to 3:00. We would have no deliveries in the alley on that day, no one really delivers on Sunday, so all our, you know, preparation and food items for brunch would be delivered throughout the week, mostly Friday, Saturday. You know, I just want to say we'll take the same care and consideration that we do now with the neighbors and noise at the back of the building, understanding that Sunday is, you know, usually what people may consider a family day or quieter day. But certainly, I don't think we're exhibiting undue noise at this time to begin with, and Sunday will, you know, certainly be careful as well. So, my Class C liquor license allows me to start serving alcohol at noon. I wouldn't serve, and you can ask for a variation, I believe you can ask for a variation to even start serving alcohol at 7:00 AM. I have no desire to do that. I don't want to even be up at 7:00 AM after closing Saturday. But there will be some staff members that will be coming in early, you know, that being said, and, you know, just maybe three staff members to do some prep in the morning. So anyway, back to the alcoholic beverage service. A lot of restaurants in the area like to do what they call a, I think they call it a all-you-can, it basically boils down to being an all-you-can-drink type beverage. And it encourages people to get inebriated, in my opinion. They call it a bottomless Bloody Mary or a bottomless Mimosa type thing. I frankly think that's absolutely ridiculous. It's, you know, it encourages people to get, to over and buy and get their money's worth. So we will absolutely not be participating in those kinds of drinks. So, that being said, we have a great menu planned. If we're approved tonight, we'll put it into motion and open as soon as possible.
Nancy, if you're not serving champagne or whatever else until noon, do you think the 11:00 AM start is going to work?
Sure. People can have coffee and other beverages.
Or will they just show up at noon?
They may. But if anyone, you know, I mean, a lot of people don't care to have a drink with brunch and maybe are a little bit, you know, I wouldn't call it an early bird at 11:00 AM, but can come in and, or they just know that at noon, if they decide to order a drink, they could.
Other questions?
Hey Nancy, the biggest concerns I ever hear are, and I think you addressed it in here, are just like the recycling noises, the bottles crashing into the thing. And Sundays are a day that people love to nap or watch golf and whatever. But so, so hopefully, yeah, keeping it really quiet and things like that to just, because that is such a jarring kind of noise.
It is, it is. And currently, we don't, we don't access any recycling bins after nine o'clock on any night of the week, just because, you know, people may go to bed early and that crashing noise is obnoxious, quite frankly. So I could, I could even say that we wouldn't access the glass recycling bins on Sunday. I mean, we could say we could do that and hold them until Monday.
So they can nap, that would be great.
So can we amend our motion then?
Well, I've got some touches. Any other questions?
I think you've done a good job over there. I was not really forward. I think you've done a great job.
Thank you.
And I, I will support your...
Oh, thank you, Sherri. Mr. Bushy?
Sherri, worded a proposed motion if people were in favor of this. I would suggest in her motion that in the fourth line, after as listed in, insert comma, and subject to the limitations of her letter of request, which will then incorporate by reference the no alcohol before noon, the no bottomless all-you-can-drink cocktail menu, et cetera. Is that fair, Nancy?
Yeah, and frankly, my liquor license does not allow me to serve before noon.
But you could apply for the new expanded license.
I guess I'd have to come back to the city, though, for that.
And then also condition on no deliveries on Sunday. So, then the last two lines of that motion.
If you're gonna put in all those other provisions, why don't you put in no recycling on Sunday?
I have it written down. I forgot to do that. Thank you.
Okay, just making sure you're covering your bases.
No recycling of glass only, did we say?
That's what you said, yes, of glass.
Yeah, which is the noisiest, of course.
So then the last two lines would read, restaurant on Sundays from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM, as listed in, and subject to the limitations of her letter of request, and conditioned on no deliveries or recycling of glass on Sunday.
So moved.
I think you have to read the whole thing.
I know, I know. Well, I can't read it already.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I move that City Commission approved request by Ms. Nancy Crutchfield of Crutchfield, Inc., Cork Wine Pub, to alter its plan of operation, open the restaurant on Sundays from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM, as listed in her...
As listed in, and subject to the limitations of...
There you go. Limit to the...
I'll read it. And subject to the limitations of her letter of request, and conditioned on no deliveries or recycling of glass on Sunday. Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
All right.
Thank you.
The way it reads now, you say you can't deliver glass on Sunday.
No.
Recycling.
No deliveries or recycling of glass on Sunday.
Right.
Who seconded?
I did.
Okay. Discussion?
I think those are livable. Do you? Okay.
Oh, absolutely.
Maybe we'll take a vote.
Commissioner Bushy?
Yes.
Commissioner Ravino?
Yes.
Commissioner Krzyak?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Mayor Costelli.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item is consideration of the report by Officer Robert Reed regarding a neighborhood watch program in the city of Pleasant Ridge. Rob?
Good evening. Thank you for having me here.
You've cleaned up since last I saw you.
It's all right. I don't want people to see me off duty. They'll never know who I am. Here to report to you guys that we are starting a neighborhood watch program sponsored by the Pleasant Ridge Police Department. Want to make the commission aware as well as the residents that we will be having our first meeting October 16th, which is a Tuesday. It'll be at 7:00 PM at the Pleasant Ridge Drive Center. It'll be in the large room. I'm sorry, what time? 7:00 PM. You don't have to write it down because you were gonna find out about this overwhelmingly. There are going to be signs all around the city, there will be announcements, there will be items everywhere reminding you of the date and time. Good. We have a lot of things planned. I'm not gonna spoil everything tonight, but just wanted to let you guys in on a little bit of it. We will have refreshments, we will have a couple door prizes to give away. As I said, you're gonna see signs popping up, like the lawn signs telling you when and where it's gonna be. We have a limited program for Pleasant Ridge. It's based on the Department of Justice model policy that they put together, sample policy. I think it's gonna be pretty decent. We're gonna have a bunch of different items. We're gonna have a social media campaign. We'll have signs installed throughout the neighborhoods saying it's a neighborhood watch street. They'll have the number for the police department on it, so that if you're out walking, you don't remember the number, boom, look up, there it is. Is there anything that you wanted me to add to that?
No, I, you know, offered a compliment to you, I think it was last month or whatever, for the work that you've done on this. It's a huge program, and you can really define it to whatever level fits the community. And Rob has done, Officer Reed has done a lot of research, and I think has outlined to me a great program that will be to the benefit of all the residents. You know, it's probably been two years since Commissioner Bushy mentioned this program to me, and then followed up by Commissioner Perry. It was a matter of really finding the right person that would be willing to take the time to develop the program. So thanks to Officer Reed for this, and
Yes.
we appreciate the time. I know you're gonna do a great job with it.
Did anybody have any questions for me while I was here?
No teasers? We don't get a teaser?
Endless questions.
I mean, I could give it all away, but I really don't want to. I think you guys have enough on your plate this evening.
Is Ted gonna tape the meeting so that it can be on...
There is one thing that we have not discussed yet, but I can get with Mr. Zachary and get that figured out.
That'd be a good idea to get it.
That's great.
Thank you, Rob.
No problem.
I think there was a question.
Well, I've been...
Can you come to the microphone?
Janet McCutcheon, Ford, Devonshire. I've had a watch program sign in my windows for years through the Ferndale Public School System where they ran us, yeah, the child watch, where my house was a safe house for the kids. And they saw it in the window, they could knock on my door if they were in trouble. Should I take that down and redo it with you guys?
They've actually discontinued those programs
Yeah.
from many years ago, yeah.
Okay, because nobody's, I mean, they ran my driver's license through, you know, whatever, they run it through, and, yeah, background check, the whole bit, so it's like...
Our program's gonna be more based on letting people know how to be aware of their surroundings, how to contact us, how to get things made.
So there's nowhere for the children to run?
We're gonna have children's activities, too. The first meeting's gonna be pretty much just adults getting things aware, but we're gonna do programs for kids, we're gonna do, we have a lot of stuff planned. But we are gonna have stickers so that people can identify some of the neighborhood watch houses, that type of thing. But I don't know if their program is actually going, but most of those were discontinued years ago.
Well, I figured if a kid showed up, I'd call you guys, but...
Probably the best thing to do.
Okay, thanks. I will, it's in my calendar.
Is there anything else?
Thank you very much. We appreciate the time.
Thank you for having me. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next item is consideration of the request by Sergeant Michael Bunning and Officer Glenn Fern to purchase additional service credit for the municipal employees' retirement system known as MERS.
So...
How can you turn it down to these guys?
I should have worn my gun.
Sergeant Bunting and Officer Fern, in fact, a lot of the employees in Pleasant Ridge have worked for the city for a number of years. And so one of the things that you're allowed to do under our retirement system is to buy additional years, which would allow you to retire earlier. So, and meet the standard and criteria for retirement. So I think actually Sergeant Bunting was the one that started the talk. I probably started it because I was telling our younger employees that now is the time to buy your years, because the older you get, the more it costs. Anyway, and so Sergeant Bunting followed up, and that led to a phenomenal effect. So they have both looked into it and are able to purchase additional years, and it is certainly my recommendation that the city allow them to do so with the hope that neither of these officers have any intention of leaving until I am long gone.
I have no idea how to leave right now.
I moved the table for three years.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move the request by Sergeant Bunting, Michael Bunting, to purchase additional service credits for the multiple employees' retirement system known as MERS, be approved, conditioned upon Mr. Bunting, including the entire cost of the purchase as recommended.
Is there support?
Support.
May we take a vote?
Commissioner Bush?
Yes.
Commissioner Ravino?
Yes.
Commissioner Kriziyak?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Mayor Costelli?
Yes, motion carries. Next item or next motion would be for Officer Fern. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the request of Officer Glenn Fern to purchase additional service credit for the municipal employees' retirement system, also known as MERS, be approved, conditioned upon Mr. Fern, including the entire cost of the purchase as recommended.
Is there support?
Support.
May we take a vote?
Commissioner Ravino?
Yes.
Commissioner Bush?
Yes.
Commissioner Kriziyak?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Mayor Costelli?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, guys.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you, guys.
Next item, also of interest to the police, consideration of the 2010 through 2013 contract agreement between the city of Pleasant Ridge and the Pleasant Ridge Command Officers Association. Sherry.
Mayor, you have in your packet this evening the agreement that we are working under with Sergeant Bunting. The agreement was reached some time ago, shortly after the patrol officers, and it pretty much mirrors the patrol officer's contract. It's my recommendation that the contract be approved. The effective years are July 1st, 10, through July 1st, 13.
June 30 to 13.
Yeah.
Questions?
Yes, Mayor. Sherry, I was just wondering why there was no agreement for the two years.
Sergeant Bunting is a one-man contract, union contract. It's not recognized by the state. It's not recognized by the attorneys. It's really not recognized at all. But it is a protective measure and, you know, because Mike and I enjoy negotiating, we keep it in effect.
So this was really...
It is. It's a measure of protection. It is something the city has had in place for years, so certainly there's past practice that comes into play.
Yes, not unusual also to be well into the next year before a settlement is reached. Correct.
We were waiting on the patrol officers, basically.
I would like to sit in on those negotiations.
Is there a motion?
Your Honor, I move that the agreement between the city of Pleasant Ridge and the Pleasant Ridge Command Officers Association for a period of three years, effective July 1, 2010, and till June 30, 2013, be approved, and that the mayor, city clerk, city manager, and city attorney be authorized to sign the agreement.
Is there support?
Support.
Got to start working on the next agreement. May we take a vote?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Ravino?
Yes.
Commissioner Bush?
Yes.
Commissioner Kriziyak?
Yes.
Mayor Costelli?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. Next item is consideration of establishing a public hearing on Monday, September 24, 2012, at 7:00 p.m. to solicit public comments on an application for a liquor license by Mr. Thomas Pearlman, 24220-24242, Woodward Avenue, Pleasant Ridge, Michigan. Sherry.
Mayor, pretty much the way you read the item on the agenda is what I have to say. I received an application. It is still in the process of being reviewed, but it has been accepted by the city as being complete. The first step to establishing a public hearing is before you this evening, and the recommendation is that it be set on Monday, September 24, 2012, at 7:00 p.m., and that will be held at the community center.
Is there such a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that a public hearing to solicit public comments on a proposed liquor license application, request by Mr. Thomas Pearlman, 24220 and 24242, Woodward Avenue, Pleasant Ridge, Michigan, be established from Monday, September 24, 2012, at 7:00 p.m. as recommended.
Is there support?
I second.
Questions, comments? May we take a vote?
Commissioner Bush?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Kriziyak?
Yes.
Commissioner Ravino?
Yes.
Mayor Costelli?
Yes, motion carries.
Mayor, if I could, I'm sorry, but I would just encourage all residents to attend, but also please contact City Manager Sherry Ball and the mayor and my fellow commissioners with your opinions. I think it really helps if before the meeting, we get a good response from residents as far as how they feel about this proposed liquor license application.
And then, Sherry, unlike other ordinances or other public hearings, the mailing list for this one is how extensive?
It is citywide and includes a portion of the northernmost portion of the city of Ferndale.
More public hearings. Number 15, consideration of the establishing a public hearing on Tuesday, October 9, 2012, at 7:30 p.m. to solicit public comments on the proposed Oakland County Community Development Block Grant Program, year 2013, community application and subrecipient agreement. Is there a motion? It is a mouthful.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the public hearing to solicit public comments on the 2013 public development, community development block grant, CDVG, community application and subrecipient agreement be established for Tuesday, October 9, 2012, at 7:30 as recommended.
Is there support?
Support.
May we take a vote?
Commissioner Ravino?
Yes.
Commissioner Bush?
Yes.
Commissioner Kriziyak?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Mayor Costelli?
Yes, motion carries. It took me about four years, but I learned to talk real slow through that one. Next item is consideration of an ordinance to amend Chapter 70 Traffic and Vehicles of the Pleasant Ridge City Code regarding the adoption of the Michigan Motor Vehicle Code amendments. And this one again is to establish a public hearing. Sherry, any comments you want to make on this one?
I don't. The city attorney may wish to comment.
As you know, that last year, the state legislature passed special legislation regarding what they called a high VAC or what they called a super drunk, meaning that anyone registered 8.17 or above be treated more harshly in relationship to the law. And what happened was is that it meant that a person could be incarcerated for a period of six months. What happened was is that the only ones that can obviously administer these are the Oakland County Prosecutor's Office. However, because that all the money that would be generated from this particular type of prosecution would be shipped to the county, that all the cities then, what they were doing is just not writing the high VACs. They were just writing the normal drunk driving so that the city then would receive all of the monies from the essence of the prosecution. Legislature understanding that that's what's happened, they then amended the ordinance or state law so that the cities can opt if they want to, to be able to prosecute these high VACs under their local ordinance. So this will be asking the city commission to adopt it so that the police department can write tickets for these high VACs.
Is there a motion to set that public hearing for October 9, 2012, at, say, 7:30 p.m.?
Mayor, I move that a public hearing to solicit public comments on the proposed ordinance to amend Chapter 70 Traffic and Vehicles of the Pleasant Ridge City Code regarding the adoption of the Michigan Motor Vehicle Code amendments be established for Tuesday, October 9, 2012, at...
Same.
What?
Same day as the community application.
City commission meeting.
Yeah, it's a meeting.
Oh, okay.
Be established for Tuesday, October 9, 2012, at 7:30 p.m. as recommended.
Is there support?
Support.
May we take a vote?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Bush?
Yes.
Commissioner Kriziyak?
Yes.
Commissioner Ravino?
Yes.
Mayor Costelli?
Yes, motion carries. Next item is consideration of the marketing agreement between the city of Pleasant Ridge and Utility Service Partners Private Labels, Inc., regarding utility service line warranties. Sherry.
Mayor and city commissioners, you will recall, a few months ago, I met with representatives from the Utility Service Partners. Basically, what this is, is a service that this company offers to residents. It's an insurance policy so that if you have a sewer collapse or a sewer repair, they are covered if you purchase the insurance. The company comes in, and the reason they need the agreement is they use the city's logo on all of their marketing material to know, so that residents understand that the city has partnered with this company and that they have been vetted and are legit. There was great interest from the city commission when I initially brought this to you to participate in some program and be able to offer it to our residents, and my recommendation is that the city enter into this agreement with them. If that is the case, this program will begin this fall.
And you found out about this group, how, Sherry?
I found out about this group, actually, the city of Huntington Woods, because one of their elected officials attended the National League of Cities Convention, found out about it, attended a, you know, a session, and then came back and was impressed by it. They signed up for it and then, you know, threw the grapevine. I can tell you this, that I, once I met with them, I immediately contacted probably 25 cities so that everyone at least was made aware of it. I think that's one thing in our managers group that is lacking.
And then if we go forward with this, 10% of the monies they receive from premium dollars would come to the city treasury.
Right. The way the program works, I believe it's $6 a month that you, that residents are asked to pay. I'm pretty sure it's $6 a month if you choose. And then of the monies collected, the company gives the city back 10% of the total. So it's an option. You don't have to buy it. You don't have to pay for it. But I think anyone who has gone through a sewer repair understands that it's a pretty expensive process. And this way, at least, if they paid into the insurance policy, it would be covered.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. Would this be something that would be put on our bill or is this something that would be billed directly to the homeowner or...
It's billed directly to the homeowner. The city has, they know administrative responsibility.
This is totally volunteer, that they, no one has to sign up on this.
That's correct.
We don't have to have a minimal amount of people signing up to participate in this. It could be one person in the whole city of Pleasant Ridge.
That's correct.
And we get 60 cents a month.
I have a question. Yes. Sherry, do you know of any situations where they actually have to go and dig up sewers and have performed a service?
I do. I couldn't tell you the address or the property, but there have been some properties in the communities that have already signed up with this program who have used the service. And they use local contractors. They don't bring in their own. They actually ask the city for a list of contractors that they will call. So they have a great program.
This is a one-year agreement, subject to renewal unless either side opts out on 90 days' notice at the end of the year. Is there a motion?
Mayor, I have a question, too. Or you want me to wait?
Well, let's go for the question. We've been asking questions up till now.
It is, I mean, it seems like such a winner-type thing. I mean, like a no-lose. It's such a small premium. I mean, and I went on their website and it looked very positive. So the feedback you've gotten back from other communities was totally credible.
Absolutely.
Because it's a great deal.
Oh, absolutely. I know.
I mean, I've already repaired, placed mine, so I can't take advantage of it, but it's in our lovely tree-lined community. That's true. Okay.
Yes, sir.
John, Lieutenant Camerton, will this cover from my house out to the sewer in the street or just from the property line to the sewer in the street?
Do you know, Sherry, is that a question for the insurer?
Yeah, I, John, I haven't seen the actual document that the homeowner will be asked to sign, but I believe it will cover anything that the homeowner is responsible for. So in the case of a sewer line, you are responsible up to and including the connection in the street. That should be covered by this policy. In the case of a water line, it's from the back of sidewalk to the house.
And, Sherry, I recall, and it's not, not in here, but I recall the material you gave us before, that I think there were a couple different levels of premium tied to a couple different levels of benefits.
That's what I recall. Obviously, I don't have it in the packet this evening, but it seemed like there was a $4 premium and a $6 premium. They were both minimal amounts, relatively speaking. And all of this, like I said, it's a marketing contract that we are entering, and they will be the ones responsible for letting people know what it is exactly they're offering and what it costs, and then residents will make that choice. They just need permission to use our label.
Is there a motion?
I have a question.
Can you come to the microphone, please?
On this particular...
Name and address, please.
My name is Joel Lyman, 43 Devonshire. I have a question on it, is that if another company wanted to come in and offer the same thing, the only thing that this company basically is getting from Pleasant Ridge is basically permission to use the logo and getting paid for that item. Am I correct?
Sherry?
Yeah, basically, yes.
That's a non-exclusive license.
Yeah.
That's what I was looking for here, was non-exclusive. Is there a motion? We're on 17.
Your Honor, I move that the marketing agreement between the city of Pleasant Ridge and the Utility Service Partners Private Labels, Inc., regarding utility service line warranties be approved and that the city manager be authorized to sign the agreement as recommended.
Is there support?
I'll support that.
Sherry, is this one that only you have to sign or should it be the usual litany of...
This is one, this is one that I have to sign.
Yes, sir. Come to the microphone.
Brett Scott, 6th Devonshire. Just a quick question. Is this limited to this only one service? Is this the only service that they offer? Or do they offer other services where they might use our logo to promote their service?
They did have other services, I saw on the website, like water line and...
Water and sewer lines is, I think, all they have.
And somehow the water line is separate where they don't, like, they can offer that to anyone, but for some reason, they can only offer sewer lines when it come, like, with the city's approval.
I don't think so. I think it's water and sewer, whatever you choose to, you know, have covered.
Okay.
I think that was where there was a difference in the coverage and the expense.
Just wondering if our contract is limited to this particular service in the event that they offer other services, that they might use our logo to market.
Good question.
Boy, we're not given a permission for that, are we?
Yeah, I think, I think they, this is...
Limited to water.
It's limited to water and sewer. It's limited to water and sewer.
Good question, no, thank you.
Service line warranty.
May we take a vote?
Commissioner Carey?
Yes.
Commissioner Ravino?
Yes.
Commissioner Bushy?
Yes.
Commissioner Kuziak?
Yes.
Mayor Costelli?
Yes, motion carries. Next item is number eighteen. Appointment of the city's delegate to the Michigan Municipal League Annual Meeting to be held October third through October fifth, two thousand and twelve. The manager's recommendation is to appoint me. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the appointment of Mr. Ralph A. Costelli, Jr., as city delegate to the Michigan Multiple League Annual Meeting to be held October third through October fifth of two thousand and twelve be approved as recommended.
I'll support that.
Can we take a vote?
Commissioner Bushy?
Yes.
Commissioner Ravino?
Yes.
Commissioner Kuziak?
Yes.
Commissioner Carey?
Yes.
Mayor Costelli?
Yes, motion carries. Next item is the consideration of the appointment of Ms. Christine Mattias, is that how you pronounce it?
Matthias?
Matthias?
Yes.
To the Pleasant Ridge Recreation Commission to fill an unexpired term. That term to expire December thirty-first, two thousand and twelve. And she's being nominated for appointment to fill a vacancy left by the resignation of Ms. Nina Miller, who we thank for her service. Sherri?
I have nothing further to add. I concur with the recommendation made by the Recreation Commission.
Is there a motion?
Mayor, I move that the appointment of Ms. Christine Matthias to the Pleasant Ridge Recreation Commission to fill an unexpired term. Term to expire December thirty-first, two thousand and twelve. Be approved as recommended.
Support. And then she would be eligible for two full terms after the partial correction.
That's correct.
Uh, may we take a vote?
Commissioner Kuziak?
Yes.
Commissioner Bushy?
Yes.
Commissioner Carey?
Yes.
Commissioner Ravino?
Yes.
Mayor Costelli?
Yes, motion carries.
Mayor, if I could?
Yes.
Um, I would just like to extend the recreation, on behalf of the Recreation Commission, congratulations to Ms. Matthias for her appointment. And also, uh, offer our congratulations on an expectin', uh, baby. Last time I saw her, she, I don't know if she'll appreciate this, but she was, um, her due date.
Probably not a good idea. If you have to ask that question, it is probably not a good idea.
She looked beautiful. She really, she was glowing. And she and her husband, Tim, are expecting their second child, so we offer them our sincere congratulations.
Thank you. Number twenty, consideration of the following bids. Police patrol vehicle purchase and paying for the police patrol vehicle. Chief?
Mayor Costelli, commissioners, as you know, in the two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen five-year capital improvement plan, the police department has requested a purchase of a new vehicle. We have not purchased a new patrol car since two thousand and ten. The past year, estimated cost of repairs have skyrocketed to about twenty-two thousand on all the vehicles. So through the Michigan State Cooperative Purchasing Program, I recommended that we purchase a new patrol vehicle. And upon reviewing all the two thousand and thirteen vehicles, we have come up with the two thousand and thirteen Ford. I call it Explorer, they call it SUV Interceptor. At a cost of thirty-one thousand, one hundred and four dollars, which includes the cost of retrofitting the car with the necessary emergency equipment, light bars, in-car computer, in-car camera, through the state purchasing program. And then funds were allotted in the capital improvement plan over a five-year period in account of one oh one, three seventy-nine seventy, which is the capital improvement program. Along with this, I did research on financing. And what I came up with, I found two outside sources of financing. One was Ford Motor Credit, one was national equipment leasing. And the third option would be a loan from the city's segregated capital assets fund, or SCAF. And after reviewing all the financing, I would recommend that the purchase be financed from the SCAF account for a period of five years at an interest rate of five percent. I understand this was done, an option to the Downtown Development Authority for the purchase of the fairway parking lot. The SCAF account would benefit because we're paying back with interest. The city would benefit. The interest rates from Ford Motor Credit and national equipment leasing are over six percent. So that would be a win-win situation to handle the financing that way. If you look, there's further information. It was attached in the memo. And the car is actually in, it's the black SUV behind the patrol cars. The two thousand and six Chevy Impala, which has done us well because we've had it since two, two thousand and five, would be retired. Cool.
Can you ram somebody with it first?
No, there's no ramming going on.
But that's, that's the way we would do it. We would sell it, probably, on the internet.
Questions to the chief?
Mayor, I have no questions, but I would like to say that I appreciate the research that the chief did on this issue. And also, as a employee of the big three, appreciate his selection of the Ford Interceptor. I know there are many choices out there that the chief could have made, and I appreciate him purchasing a Ford vehicle.
Which of the big three do you work for?
Officer research on the patrol cars as well, so he, he deserves some credit on this.
Thank you.
I'm gonna call for a motion, but don't you go away, please. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the purchase of a new police patrol vehicle through the State of Michigan Cooperative Purchase Program be approved in the amount of thirty-one thousand, one hundred and four dollars, and that the segregated capital asset fund known as SCAF finances the purchase of the vehicle over five years at a rate of five percent interest as recommended.
Is there support?
Support.
May we take a vote?
Commissioner Bushy?
Yes.
Commissioner Ravino?
Yes.
Commissioner Kuziak?
Yes.
Commissioner Carey?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. Chief, I'm sure everybody's been asking you, they can see you. If you can give us a brief briefing on yesterday.
Basically, what happened was a gentleman robbed the Chase Bank in Huntington Woods. There was a gentleman in the parking lot, spotted him, followed him, called it in. The Huntington Woods cars picked him up right around, just north of Lincoln. A short chase ensued. He happened to do a three-sixty on Woodward Avenue, right out here, just north of Oxford. He bailed out of his car and started running. Cut through the yards and he turned and made a gesture like he was gonna shoot at the officers, so they shot him. I did not do any shooting. I actually took off after him and fell, when I hit the wet grass, and pulled a hamstring. That's why I'm limping.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good job, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Next item is public discussion items not on the agenda.
Hello, my name's Joel Dahl, I live at forty-three Devonshire. The last time I was in front of you was probably close to ten years ago when I asked for a variance in my garage. Thank you very much. Reason I'm coming here today is because, not specifically because of the water bill I received, but I received a very, very high water bill. And it prompted me to investigate why our water bill is so high in Pleasant Ridge. Apparently, we receive our water from a, a third party is who bids us. We all receive it from Detroit, but apparently, there's a third party who actually bills the cities, the big bulk bill, who then turns it down into little city bills for the rest of us. And it's coming from Southeastern Oakland Community Water Authority. That's who bills the actual individual city. If you go onto their website, you can find that there is actually rates that each individual city that deals with this particular authority pays, okay? Pleasant Ridge is the highest, okay, out of everybody who's paying water. And I'm here today because I'd like to know why. I'd figured out that SACRA is the short acronym form. Pay is charging the city's thirteen dollars and seventy-five cents per one thousand metric cubic feet of water and sewer. But the City of Pleasant Ridge is charging us, okay, above and beyond, on an average of a hundred and eight point fifty-six cents on the same thirteen dollars that we're paying. So they're charging us a hundred and twenty-one dollars estimate, what we're paying them thirteen seventy-five. I would really like to know where the rest of the money is going. Because I haven't seen any sewer repairs around, and from the sewer forward is our responsibility, so where's this money going and why are we paying such enormous costs? Now, here, the City of Pleasant, City of Berkeley, since it was a discussion earlier, they're paying forty-six dollars and twenty-one, twenty-five cents. That's what they pay, okay? They are the low end of the totem pole. Ferndale is somewhere around a hundred and two. Rell looks like ninety-three. And I just simply want to know, where's this money going and why are we being charged so high for a utility that we're stuck paying? And if we don't, transfers onto our tax rolls, and then in three years, the county takes our property. So I simply would like to know why we're paying such enormous costs when I can't see a reason why.
Sherri?
I sent an email answering those specific questions to you yesterday, Mr. Dahl. Maybe you didn't receive it. But the thirteen seventy-five that SACRA bills the city is the portion that we also bill the residents. For water. That does not include sewer, that does not include the George W. Green drain debt, that does not include any kind of reserve, that does not include the meter fee. There are many other charges on the water bill that account for the minimum billing, which is actually a hundred and twenty-one dollars.
That's what I said.
And that, in my email, like I said, I went into great detail to explain those charges to you. So when you receive the number of thirteen seventy-five from SACRA, that's the cost of water, and that is what we bill our residents.
That is not what she told me. She told me it was water, sewer. I called her back and asked her that specific question.
Okay, they are a water authority, they have nothing to do with sewer.
So they're saying that they do not, we do not pay them for sewer, is what you're saying.
We do not pay them for sewer.
Okay, so who do we pay for sewer, then?
Oakland County.
Oakland County. What department would I have to contact to find out what we're actually paying?
You could contact the Drain Commissioners Office, which is probably the best place to get answers.
Okay, and then also, you also mentioned the fact that the meter reading, the meter reasoning is a separate charge on our bill, which has nothing to do with a hundred and twenty-one dollars. It's a completely separate charge. So the water's not, the meter's not an issue either. The meter's completely a separate charge on there, so that's not part of the hundred and twenty-one.
I have a detailed, do you have that, that's been on the counter for about three months? In fact, when you were in the other day, I don't know if you picked up a copy, right there.
Correct.
There are the charges at the bottom.
Correct. The charges on the bottom is a hundred and twenty-one dollars. It does not include the meter.
The meter charge.
The meter charge is completely separate. So you mentioned that the meter was part of it, and I'm saying it's not.
Okay, the two dollars and forty cents may not be included.
I'm sorry, it's the forty-six dollar charge for the meter that you charge us every month. Isn't it forty-six dollars we get charged, or is that?
Two dollars and forty per quarter.
Okay, that's garbage, okay. Okay, but either, okay, and then the meter is a separate charge also. You do agree, right?
Two dollars and forty cents per quarter.
So then again, we're paying a hundred and twenty-one dollars a month. Where's the money going?
Mister Dahl, if you just let me answer when you ask a question.
You haven't answered yet. You're giving me a roundabout answer.
First of all, you asked me what the meter charge is. It's two dollars and forty cents per quarter.
What, you said that the meter charge was part of the bill and part of a hundred and twenty-one dollars, when it is not. I am saying it is a separate charge. I'm simply asking the question, where is the hundred and eight dollars per one thousand metric cubic feet going?
I'm gonna show you. And if you care, Ted can put it on camera. Here's the charge that you got from SACRA. Thirteen seventy-five is what we bill you for water. The sewer, we bill you forty-seven dollars and eighty-three cents per quarter. Or, you know, per thousand cubic feet per quarter. Here's the GWK drain debt that's on your water bill, ten dollars and ninety-two cents. Here is the administration and maintenance charge. This equals one twenty-one. So I'm trying to answer you, this is a breakdown of the fee.
So you're saying you're paying, we're paying thirty dollars per, per one thousand cubic square feet for what you're calling administrative and maintenance?
Yes.
And Berkeley pays twenty-six, twenty-six dollars, total, forty-six dollars and twenty-five cents total. Why, it still doesn't make any sense.
It's hard to compare one community to another.
How?
Berkeley, well, Berkeley has a very different system, as you noticed on that chart from SACRA. Berkeley's way off the chart from other communities. Here's a reason for that. Some number of years ago, they hired an engineering firm to come in and develop this rate that's called an ERU.
Equivalent residential unit.
Correct. ERU is what it's called. By doing that, Berkeley, because it has a larger commercial district, they add a great number of water meters to their billing. And they're allowed to do this by law and by their audit. So it skews the number of what they're billing their commercial, I mean, their residential customers.
So basically, you're saying they have more residents, they have more commercial, and they bill more, so which means they're making more money and it's being charged more. We're a smaller community, it still doesn't explain why we're paying so much. I'm like my, I'm simply saying, my, my, my comment here is a fact of matter is that our bill is huge. It's the highest in Oakland, Southern Oakland County, easy. And I simply just think that's outrageous. I think it should be addressed, and I think our bill should be lowered to match at least the average that's being paid by everybody else. Thank you very much, I appreciate your time. Second thing, Sherri, I think you did a very great job covering everybody's butt when it comes to the fifty-two thousand dollars.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Callie Stone, I live on fourteen Norwich. I want to address the commission regarding fireworks. I do not know if this has been addressed in past meetings, but I'm just gonna give you my most recent feelings about it. I know the law has changed, and I know the residents in neighboring communities have spoken out, and there has been changes in the laws. And as a mother of two children, and what I've heard this last year has been different than the previous, previous five years that I've lived in this community. And I find it.
Heard, but I refer to a, the fireworks going off.
Oh, the, the sound, right, the, the.
As opposed to people talking.
Right, exactly, no, the, the sound and the disturbance that is creating in my house and, and where I live. And I, I, I think I've, my, between my husband and myself, I have never called the police so many times regarding the disturbances. And even in particular, this last weekend, Labor Day weekend, Sunday night, Monday night, they were going off. As I'm trying to prepare my kids, going back to school, getting them to bed early, they are going off and disturbing the peace. I don't agree with the state's law. I think that we can do better in, in curbing this kind of disturbance in our community. It's uncalled for. We have homes, I mean, we have dry conditions. There's, there's a number of reasons that this should be concerned to all of us, that these fireworks that propel up can cause, could be a potential fire hazard. But right now, it's really disturbing my peace in my home. And I wish that, that you, the commission, would consider doing something to curb this. The state is allowing ten holidays for this to be allowed, for people to put off fireworks, including Thanksgiving, Christmas, there are all these lists. It means people can potentially be putting fireworks off on these days, and the day before, the day of, and the day after. And I think it's, I think it's, I thought it was, you know, it's something more for Fourth of July. It's become this year-round tradition that I think is a little excessive, and would like to see it, if, you know, if we can do something about it to get a little more control on it, we'd appreciate that. And I also have one other comment. I don't know, I, I've read about the, the rodent in the news regarding the rodent situation. We're trying to, that Scott is working on this grant to get a better handle on our, our refuge. Suggestions, in my own household, I did purchase one of those large containers that you use in the city hall with the top that goes down, because as soon as I moved here, the squirrels immediately went to the rubber mate and were ripping them off. So I, we got one of those years ago, and they're great. They never were able to lift the lid off of that. Those trash never gets, is never, you know, it's always contained. And as far as recycling, I have two recycling containers now. We started with one, but as the recycling authority can accept so much more recycled products that I've had to get another one. And even those two are quite full on, on trash days, and I'm not always able to put those down. I mean, they can get in those too, and those can be part of the problem. I, I really find that Huntington Woods, their large containers, that they are able to put everything in, and you can dump them all at once. It's, it's really nice if something that maybe the commission could consider in the future. But that's just my input on that, so.
Before you leave, Mayor Coulter is spearheading, I was talking to you. Mayor Coulter is spearheading a drive among mayors to petition the state to change the fireworks law to back to the way it was. He contacted us, what, about two weeks ago, Sherri?
That's about right. I'm sure it'll be coming up this week at the meeting.
And then, secondly, and this I'm gonna to punt over to Sherri, I think for the recycling apparatus that Huntington Woods has, you also have to have the contractor on board to load it in a specific way?
It started as a pilot program in Huntington Woods because they are of the communities that belong inside bra. They volunteer and they are, you know, high numbers for recycling, and, and we're right behind them. Those containers, after the pilot program was successful, what a surprise, those containers were purchased by the Huntington Woods Dad's Club. And so their, their annual auction, the money actually went to the purchase of those. And then the contract between SACRA and Huntington Woods was adjusted so that the contractor, they pay more for that. But I think people are more than willing to pay a little bit more to have that service. I'm hoping it won't be long before all of the communities are able. That's a single-stream recycling process.
Oh, it would be great, yeah. And we, we do it more and more. We're encouraging the kids, you know, everybody, we're, every little bit, we're trying to get in. My containers are just bursting, like, I'm gonna have to buy a third one. It's really, you know, so.
That's great.
If that's what we're, we're gonna do, or to that, we appreciate that very much. It'd be great for the community. It'll help with, I mean, that's where the, the, you know, the, the mice or whatever, that's what they go for, you know, so if we can contain that, I think that will help with that problem.
Sherri, has the price come down on those big recycling bins at all, and that program at all?
I'm not aware that the price has come down. And, and the other, the other thing that makes it so problematic is the recycling facilities are not retrofitted for single-stream. So there's this.